Hello, can everyone hear me? Right, we are ready to begin when the chairmaker is ready. I can see. Chairmaker, are you there?
Looks like she's got her hand up. Does she have control of her microphone?
Hey, there you go. Thank you for allowing me into the meeting. Thanks. That was it. I was over here trying phone calls and everything, couldn't get anybody's up like, ah. Okay, so anyway, welcome to this work session for the Oregon Aviation Board. As a reminder to everyone out there, it is a work session, so we will not be making any decisions and we will not be taking public comment at this time. It is the intent of this for the staff to educate us on matters. And as such, I am going to turn that over back to Holly so she can take quick attendance and then we'll turn it over. And I understand that we're going to probably hear some discussion or some education about how we lease things at our various airports. So with that, let me step aside and back to you, Holly.
Thank you, chairmaker. Alrighty, so chairmaker. Present.
I'm here.
Stevens, as chair.
Present.
Tom Kruger. Okay, doesn't look like Tom Kruger is here. Is this excused? Chairmaker.
Okay, go ahead.
Is Tom excused? I do not see him present.
I didn't. I haven't heard anything from him.
Okay. And then Sarah Lucas.
Present.
And Steve Nagy.
I just admitted him, so he is.
Steve Nagy, are you present? Let's see, just a moment here. We have to add him to presenter.
Hope Steve's there. I got his hand is raised, so my guess is he's on somewhere. We just got him locked out.
Okay, let me go ahead and.
Steve, go ahead and try now. I believe you should be able to access your microphone.
In the course.
Yes, I'm here now. And you, thank you for unmuting me.
Thank you. Well, call is complete.
Okay, super. Holly, can you do me a favor? Just somebody give Tom a call to make sure he's not somewhere out there in internet land locked out. We just can't get him up on the, on visual.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Andrea.
Okay, thanks. So Tony, are you running the conversation today?
Yeah, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kevin Olson, I want to introduce him. He's our new leasing and contract specialist. He joined us in June of last year and yes, very, very happy to have him on board. He's been really critical for, for just picking up a large workload, stuff that, that will enable us to, to address a lot of the stuff we're going to talk about here in this meeting and kind of the direction we're going to go. And Kevin's going to talk a little bit more about that here in just a minute. I am going to share my screen to get the presentation shared. Okay, can you all see that title slide?
Yes.
Yes, we have it.
Okay, so I'm going to click through the slides and Kevin is going to kick us off.
Hello, everybody. As Tony said, I'm Kevin Olson. I'm the contract specialist and leasing agent for the Department of Aviation. Coming up today, we're going to discuss our leasing and through the fence. It's going to be an overview. And also discuss some opportunities for improvement, what our progress has been and our next steps. So the state of Oregon has 28 state owned airports. There are 16 airports that currently have leases on them. There are 12 that do not. And out of those 28, six of them have through the fence agreements where we allow aircraft to come across the property line from offsite to use the runway and facilities. Next slide. Our leases allow for private development and/or uses on state-owned property. They all pay a base land rate, rent of plus escalations, which are done through the CPI, which is that chart alongside right there. There are additional fees for use of state-owned improvements. Separate commercial and non-commercial agreements. Commercial are FBO, flight training, maintenance, avionics, hangar storage, and the like of that. Non-commercial or for private use hangar storage only. Mostly, there are aeronautical uses. We have hangars, access for fuel, tie downs. And there are some non-aeronautical uses, agricultural. We have some farming and grazing leases, some drain field leases, and leases for the storage of equipment and services. Next slide. The 12 airports without lease agreements currently are the ones listed there. Basically, they're the airports that really are maybe mostly grass runway strips. Nobody's really wanted to go and lease at any of these airports. I don't know if that we ever would. But these are the 12 that currently have no lease agreements on them. These are the airports that have lease agreements. There's a total of 256 active lease agreements at this time. The number of leases at each airport are as follows, with Lebanon and Independence the top two. Thank you. No, no, next slide. As you can see by the pie chart here, it's broke down by region. We got valley leases of 180, coast leases of 46, north and east of 20, the mountains eight, and in the southeast two. 18 total commercial leases. And this pie chart shows you, which Tony did a great job on this, exactly where the bulk of the leases are at at this time. And next slide.
Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit about the through the fence agreements that we have. And we refer to these as access agreements. They, because they grant access between private property and the public use areas of state airport property. Access is granted in the agreement as identified at the access point. And the use is for exclusively for the movement of aircraft and personnel authorized by the Department of Aviation, if any, to utilize the access point onto state property. The fees are shown in the table to the right and our access agreements, the fees are set up where they pay the greater of either the weight and the classification of aircraft and member of aircraft or a minimum guaranteed based on the category of airport for that access agreement. We have a total of 24 access agreements and Aurora has, has the bulk of them at 13. And those are for commercial and mostly commercial and just a couple, one or two, I think, residential uses, but again, they're on private property and, and our access agreements only dictate or allow for the access between the properties. So, so we don't really dictate any uses. But they are vastly, just the majority of them are commercial at Aurora. And then Cottage Grove, we have one single individual, non-commercial residential access agreement. And Independence, we have, it's, it's all residential. Significant amount of residential between two different homeowner associations adjacent to the Independence Airport. At Lebanon, there's one personal, it's a non-aeronautical access agreement for just personal access from private property to this person's hangar, which is leased on airport property. And then at Pacific City, we have five different non-commercial residential access agreements there. And at Wasco, there are two different commercial criminally used for agricultural uses for aeronautical purposes for crop testing for, for Wasco State Airport. And so that, that is how the, the access agreements are broken down by airport. Again, with 13 access agreements and, and then with two at, 13 at Aurora and two at Independence. And those make up the most significant portion of our through the fence. And then with Pacific City with five individual units. I am going to talk a little bit about what that looks like for Aurora and Independence. And this is taken out of our draft working paper number one for the Aurora Airport Master Plan, which is currently underway. And, and this shows really well, I think, just what through the fence is like for Aurora. It shows the dashed line that encircles the runway and taxiways and the lighter blue portion of, of apron and taxi lanes. And that is all state property. The, the light blue portion is, is state-owned property and that's where we have leasing agreements for private improvements that are on state property. Again, just with, with a typical lease agreement. The darker blue or the, or the lavender color, those are private owned properties that have a through the fence agreement with us for access onto the state airport. And it, it doesn't really show it very well, but I did mention that we had 13 access agreements at Aurora and, and they just show the overall private properties, but we have different agreements, access agreements for multiple different parcels within those, those purple areas. At Independence, it's very similar, except again, for residential uses between two different homeowners associations. And the yellow shaded area, this was taken out of the 2020 Airport Master Plan for the Independent State Airport. And this is the, the off-airport land use section of the airport layout plan. And that yellow section is the state-owned property on the Independent State Airport and where all those hangars, similar to Aurora, they are, they are just land leased and privately owned. And then the non-shaded portion on what is the east side of the airport. It's rotated for, for this image, but the east side of the airport, which is at the top of, on this picture, is private property with, again, the two different homeowners associations. And then just a couple, a little overview on just what leasing looks like for the Department of Aviation. We administer and execute the lease and through the fence access agreements for all of our state-owned airports. We do have some contract services with ODOT. They provide some financial services and leasing services. They do billing. They do some document prep for us. They do a lot of mailing and correspondence. And that, that is just a breakdown of our roles and responsibilities. And then I included for reference a lot, all of the applicable ORS administrative rules, policy and, and all of our documents relevant to leasing and through the fence. I'm, I'm going to point them out here for reference and a little bit about what they do, but they, they were included in the packet. And we're going to have some more information toward the end of the, the presentation on, on these documents. So ORS 836.055 grants us the authority to enter lease agreements up to 30-year terms for non-commercial leases and up to 50-year terms for commercial leases. And it also has some, some language that I just kind of paraphrased here on establishing reasonable and uniform terms, conditions, fees and charges, and not to deprive the public of rightful use of the airports. The full ORS 836.055 is, is shown here on this slide. And I wasn't going to go into the full text of this, but, but we can, we can revert back to this if, if we need to discuss. And then 836.060 also discusses leasing up to 30-year terms for non-commercial leases and not granting exclusive rights. And again, the full text of that ORS. For administrative rule, we have divisions 10, 14, 15, and 35. I did include 20 here, but, but that actually has to do with, with standards for airport sites. That one does not refer to the, to leasing. So some apologies for including that. But these, again, all were included in the packet. We have links. All of these are available online. It can be found from links from our website at oregon.gov/aviation. And we will be going into more depth in, in these in the coming months and years as we, as we look to update, refresh all of these policies that have to do with leasing and through the fence. Our leasing policy for non-commercial property is dated July 11, 2001. We have another policy for commercial property dated August 15, 2001. And then our minimum standards, we have standards for category two, four, and, and five. What was my screen is? It's a little bit blocked. And five for, for state airports. So these, again, these are all internal policies and, and procedures for leasing and regulating commercial aeronautical activities at state-owned airports only. And, and again, they, they're due for updating. These are, these are definitely items that we intend to, to bring to the, the public and to the board for, for discussion and, and approval in the, in the coming months and years. We also have a few forms on our website. We have a hangar tenancy application form. This is what, what an individual would fill out and submit to us when they want to apply for a lease on, on state property, whether they want to build a new hangar or if they want to purchase an existing hangar. We also have a pre-construction checklist and, and then we also have non-commercial and commercial lease and through the fence template documents, boilerplate leases or through the fence agreements that, that we use for, for new leases. And as Kevin mentioned earlier, we, we do apply escalations where we, our leases allow for escalations to be applied annually. And this is done through Consumer Price Index. And, and then we also, we have our, our policy has conditions for, for how we should appraise our, our airports and, and come up with a market rate for our land lease rent or our basement. The market appraisal or the airport appraisals are due for, for all of our state airports. And, and then I had mentioned in a previous board meeting, I believe it was in the fall of 2020, that, that we have had a pretty extended amount of time where the Consumer Price Index has not been applied to just about all of our, our leases. And that's still something that we are working with DOJ on, on addressing and trying to apply that CPI consistently each year and, and again, equitably for, for all of our lessies. Over the last couple of years, we've identified a few areas of opportunities for improvement. And again, I just mentioned the CPI not having been applied since about 2014 or 2015 for, for most, if not all of our, our lease agreements. We, we have an opportunity to apply the CPI again, as outlined in the contract. This is annually using, using CPI each year. And, and I, we will have more information as we, as we work through that. That's still something that, that we're working with DOJ to, to correct. The independent rate appraisal for all state airports, as I mentioned, they, it's due for all of our airports. So, so completing that to make sure that our, our charges, our fees for leasing and through the fence are fair and competitive. And that's something that we are, are trying to put together for the summary. For the leasing program, we are looking at a software that will allow us to better administer our leases and through the fence agreements. And they will provide automated alerts and notifications and there will be a tenant or less, or a through the fence committee portal for billing and updating insurance requirements and other items. So that is a, a big improvement that we are, are looking to provide. One thing that we were doing, we're providing new leases for hangar sales between 256 hangers. We have a number of them changing hands and, and because we were providing new leases for these hangers, we, we ended up with a lot of very old hangers that are getting some pretty, well, our, our typical 30-year non-commercial lease term. So we are, we are now assigning those hangers, those leases to the buyers of those hangers. We are looking to, to utilize the, the terms and conditions that we had agreed to with the previous lessee, the seller, and carry out that term before, before we agree to an extended term when, when a hangar sells. We are also looking, as I mentioned, to update the leasing through the fence rules and policies. And again, this will include the public and board involvement as we, we look to, to get everyone's feedback and participation in what, how those changes should be made and how can we make our, our policies and, and rules more efficient and effective for our leases and through the fence agreements. And then, of course, the board to, to approve those new, those new documents. And we have an opportunity to ensure contractual regulatory compliance with all of our leasing and through the fence agreements. This remains an ongoing effort just to make sure again that we're, we're handling to, to make sure that we are administering our leases and through the fence agreements consistently with, with best industry practices and ensuring equal and fair treatment for all of our lessies and through the fence committees. And to just improve the, the process overall and including the timeliness and overall user experience for, for all of our airport users. So Kevin's going to talk a little bit about our progress toward those goals over the last year.
So as, as Tony had mentioned, the new process for renewing expiring leases, we're looking at having the lessee provide information on how they plan to, what they've done to upkeep their, their hangar, what they plan to do for any future improvements or any future work that may be necessary or required on there and requiring a building inspection to make sure that it's still structurally sound and won't become a hazard or a liability should something happen where it would fall down or catch fire or what have you. I came in to a backlog, a slight backlog of would be new leases or assignments in this case. And I processed about 20. I have one here that's on my desk that needs to go out, so it'll be up to 21. I came in also to a 31 leases that were in holdover status. They hadn't been renewed and that the lessee had not been approached as to what their intent would be if they wanted to continue with the lease. So I reached out to all of them, made contact with all, finally all. We had one that was just not able to be found, but, and have gotten information on their intent as to what they're going to do going forward with us. And I have processed 19 of those where we've done renewals or, or assignments to new less, to new buyers. That I still have about 12 more to go. A number of these are related to through the fence agreements mainly, but I do have a number. I'm just looking over my list. I have a number of about seven regular leases that need to be completed as well on that. The billing updates, as Tony explained, I'm, I'm trying to get back on the CPI cycle so that we can ensure that we're keeping up to date with that as it's stated in our leases. And then lease use and compliance is an ongoing task. Basically, we want to make sure that the hangar owners are using the hangers for the intended purpose. Since I've come aboard, I've had to send out violation letters for somebody that had a penthouse in the setback area. Somebody had B-boxes out at the airport without permission and outside of their lease area. We're also trying to keep on top of compliance for things in the setback area like debris, trash, vehicles. And I've been sending out letters saying, stating that, you know, they need to correct this per their terms. And so far, it's been a very easy experience. Nobody's really kind of pushed back. They understand that that's what the ruling is or what the rules are and, and have been complied. But it's an ongoing process. I'm based here in Salem at the, at the airport and I don't get to get out to the airport. So I rely upon our maintenance staff to go out and inform me and take photos of what's happening at the various airports. And I get right on top of it as soon as the, the information comes to me so that it doesn't get prolonged out. Next slide. The next steps we want to do are to update our lease and through the fence policies and to update the minimum standards to bring them more current to, to today's terms. I'm working, going to be working with ODOT at some point on doing a lease and through the fence template updates to better reflect the current language or, or the current climate situation of what's going on. climate situation of what's going on. We're looking at an independent rent rental rate appraisal to bring us more in line with the other airports in the in the general area or within the state so that we're charging fair and equitable terms on our leases and more in line with what the market value is at this time. Again, the CPI escalations, as as I can get to them, are going to be wrapping up here again. Then we would like to do some periodic market rate adjustments just to make sure that we are staying in line and and current with the the current terms of what other airports are charging in the state. And then our leasing program and user portal that would be a computer program to better maintain the inventory to keep us up to date with when insurance certificates expired so that we can reach out to the hangar owners and get them to update those or to stay on top of expiring leases so that we don't get into another holdover situation where where we're trying to catch up, you know, sometimes years after the fact. Next slide. And that brings us up to the questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kevin. Tony, is that the end of the presentations?
Yes, yeah, it is.
Okay, super. I have several questions, but I'm going to let the other board members go and then I'll wrap up if they don't tap on my questions that I have. So Sarah, let's start out with you. Do you have any questions?
I do, but Catherine, is yours? You have your hand raised.
There we go.
Yeah, I just had a few questions for you. So you mentioned some of the violations. It's always interesting to see what people think is an okay thing to do out on an airfield. I'm wondering about the FAA's policy on hangar use and how you are enforcing appropriate use of hangers.
Yeah. So our our leases allow for inspections, and we have not been as on top of inspections as as we would like to be. But our our leases require aeronautical use, which means at least one airworthy aircraft that is not precluded by non-aeronautical storage of items. We will allow non-aeronautical items, but it can't get in interfere with the aeronautical use.
Are you well, frankly, we've had some musical chairs of aircraft into different hangers during inspection times. Are you able to match N numbers with hangers?
Not at this time, not for for most of our leases. With just a couple very small exceptions, we we just primarily have land leases and and private hangers. We don't rent out hangar units directly, again, with a couple very small exceptions. And so it it really is each individual lessees kind of personal private improvement that they're using for for personal hangar storage.
Okay, great. And what as you talked about some of the older hangers, so what happens at the end of the 30-year lease or the 50-year lease?
The the lease, most of them are fairly consistent, you know, over over 30 years. We have some different lease language, different versions of leasing language, but the lease dictates what happens. And and primarily, it it either allows for for a replacement lease or for the lessee to to remove the improvements and restore. We do not have reversion. And in past practice has been to just replace the lease with a new lease.
With an inspection of the hangar then for
Right, that's I don't know that that has been happening, but that is what we are, what Kevin and I are implementing is the inspection process. And then we're we're granting up to 15 years for a replacement lease in five-year intervals, depending on on the the level of effort, the the investment that the lessee has made into their their structure. After the 30 years, the FAA considers the the improvement to be fully amortized. And so we're using the the past investments or recent investments, the aesthetics, the the physical condition to determine the length of the renewed lease term.
Okay, thank you. That great presentation, by the way. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions out there? Sarah, you still have some questions?
I do. Tony and Kevin, thank you for your presentation this morning. I just have a a couple of follow-up questions. When you talk about the rate appraisal, I know that is a costly undertaking for an agency to do for as many airports as we have. Has there been any thought to utilizing ODOT's rates and fees survey and report that was prepared in 2021 to help at least get a benchmark for neighboring airports to help set that market value?
We have. We have looked at that. It I I think it will ultimately be really useful for for the independent appraiser to utilize that. I think that might help make the process more efficient for them, but but our process for for how the the appraisal is done is is spelled out in in the policy. And and I think that we can either look at, is that policy still current? Is it is that still the best way for us to go? Or or if we do still need to to have an independent appraiser, then 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 we would need to follow that.
Okay. And do you know when the last appraisal was conducted?
Short answer is no. No. We we had done some work and and you know, for for easements, for obstruction removal, for some various things, but but I don't have a date for for the the rate appraisal, the front of it.
I haven't seen anything in in my research of any of the files here that shows when that was last done.
Okay. And just so you know, these questions, I know you guys are doing a lot to clean up past issues. So this is not anything pointed towards either of you. So on that registration for aircraft, like Catherine said, we need N numbers for the aircraft that are being stored. And I was wondering, moving forward, if there would be any way to link the aero aircraft registration with the leasing to make sure that they are actually paying for their aircraft registration with the state of Oregon? Because I know right now there's a disconnect between the leasing and the aircraft registration. So through that new software, if there's some way to have some interface, I think that would be great to make sure that we are collecting that that revenue. And then also a a process for processing the waitlist tenants. I know that there has been some issues in the past that people have submitted the correct paperwork that ODOT has on the website, and then for some reason, somebody else who wasn't on a waitlist was issued a lease to build a hangar. And I want to make sure that our process moving forward is clear and transparent so that when people go through the process that they are first in line for those opportunities. Because a lot of our airports don't have a lot of space and it's at a premium. So if they miss out on the last buildable spot, it's we don't want that happening. And then just the last comment I have is perhaps at our next board meeting, Tony, if you could add timelines for those benchmarks that you have for your progress moving forward so that we can kind of have in the back of our mind when when you're wanting to hit those marks.
Yeah, okay. On on the aircraft registration, I don't think we have a formal connection there, but but some of that is is happening behind the scenes. You know, we're a very small department and and our different work groups do work very closely. But but that is definitely something that we we can look into as we're as we're updating everything leasing and and through the fence on on tracking and compliance, definitely something that we will we will take a close look at. On the waitlist, I I believe that I am familiar with the one particular instance you might be referring to. And and with that person, I I am working with them to to make sure that they can get a site and develop a hangar that that meets their needs. Kevin and I have talked about revamping our whole waitlist system, and it it's not, it didn't make this presentation, but but it it is definitely something that we are are looking to address and make sure that we are being equitable and fair for everyone because, you know, we have many airports where, like you said, where where land is very limited and 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 so we that is definitely an opportunity for us to improve.
All right, thanks. And and I apologize if this verbiage is in the current leases, but something to think about moving forward is to include language in the lease that they will register their aircraft with the state as part of. And so that would go back to that compliance piece that Catherine mentioned. But thank you. I I do appreciate both of your time today.
And thank you. The the aircraft registration, that is I would have to double check, but I believe that is in there. We did strike the pilot registration component because because we went away with that. And then I I wanted to touch on timelines. You know, the next steps that that we talked about that Kevin listed out at the end of the presentation, that that is years worth of work. That is going to be a big process to update all of those rules and all of the policies and our through the fence templates. It is going to take quite some time, but in the next board meeting, we can definitely get into the the details of timeframe.
I appreciate that. It must be the planner in me because even if it is four years out, I kind of like having roadmaps and what we're working towards. So we all have the same same ideas on what it should take. Thank you, Tony.
Hey, thanks, Sarah. Steve, any questions?
Yes, actually, thank you, Chair. Tony, and thank you, Kevin, for the presentation. A couple of questions. I think I, well, one statement, I think I heard that you do not have reversion language for fees associated with reversion or for releasing.
Correct.
Okay. And that's across the board, whether you're talking about renewing a lease on airport or through through the fence agreements, correct? Okay. Is that something? So I guess I'd say, is that something we're looking at as a possibility? The reason I say that is, if in fact you are, I would recommend you take a look at your timeline for the work that needs to go on ahead and probably prioritize your minimum standards rewrite. Because if you are, and Kevin, I totally appreciate that you are working through this backlog of leases. But if you give leases and get through that backlog now and change your minimum standards to have these types of things in them, you will have leases again without minimum, your new minimum standard language for another 10, 20, or 30 years. So I would highly recommend prioritizing completing a new set of minimum standards so that that language can go into other agreements and maybe even prioritizing doing some agreements to extend them for a period of time, for a few years until you get new minimum standards so that the most current language that you will have and work from can can be incorporated into those. So I I would highly encourage that as a as a when you look at that list of all the things that you need to update, that's probably, in my opinion, at the top of it. Otherwise, great. And I'm glad to see you guys connecting things and working through the backlog. But I also think that if we haven't had a good set of minimum standards updated recently and you don't have appraisals, it's hard to do forward-looking leases without the the foundational documents and foundational information to make the choices from.
Yeah, thank you. We totally agree, you know, the the rate appraisal and and minimum standards having not been updated and going on 22 years, those those are absolutely essential and and thank you for the comments.
I will just also say, sorry, Catherine, that we are doing a rate appraisal right now. Happy when that is over to share that information with the state as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Catherine.
Yeah, and I was just going to piggyback on what Steve was saying. You know, definitely that that prioritization is is right, having gone through this recently, you know, minimum standards, leasing policy, leasing template. And I would say, you know, you don't really need to necessarily spend a lot of money doing that. I know I know staff time is spread pretty thin at this point, but there are several airports in the state that have recently undergone this process. So I would encourage you to just draw upon that. I I gathered a lot of great information from the port and from Redmond and and also an example from Washington Airport as well when we were working on ours. So don't necessarily spend a whole lot of money, just use what's already recently been redone out there.
Definitely. Thank you.
All right. Hey, Kevin, thanks, Tony, for bringing this up. It's it's really good for us to get a chance to walk through this, to know what y'all are doing. On that policy, and Kenji, this is kind of specifically to you. Items like the rate appraisal, I would be interested if, as you start this process and you tee it up to go on, does the first step need to be a review of the overarching policy with the board? For this, you know, the items that you're having done, where is the board's action needed? And I think probably just review of policy. And Tony, I really appreciate your discussion on probably bringing back some of those 2001 regulations. Just if nothing else, to dust off the front cover and to refreshen the board review date. That would be great. But for Kenji, for y'all, if you could tell us where you expect the board to interject in a process, i.e. I would think before the rate appraisal, you'll bring that regulation up to the board first, but just tell us.
Sure. Yeah, before that, we'll we'll get that to you.
Okay. And then just a question on the rate appraisal, do you anticipate, I would assume that for a rate appraisal, y'all would contract that out, true or false?
Correct, true.
Okay. And I I think that probably works well because it gives the, it gives an error of a third party versus you engaged with the tenants direct. It's it just kind of thinks that makes cleaner, and I'll defer to Steve and Catherine on that one, on how they've done rate appraisals in the past. And then just a a note that I caught, Kevin, you said you hadn't been out there to to see the hangers and those kind of things. Any desires to go drive to Aurora or, you know, to Wesco, those areas just to get eyes on? So you kind of know a little bit more when you talk to those lessees out there?
I I have been to some of the airports. As a matter of fact, I had a trip down to the Reno area. And on my way home, I stopped by Chiliquin Cascade, Cascade Lock, not Cascade Lock.
Crescent Lake.
Yeah, Crescent Lake and Oak Ridge. And viewed the what the operations there and what was going on at those three airports. Cascade Ridge, it's got some great pictures of a snowy pile of, it's probably taller than me. So, yeah, I have been to Aurora, Independence, Malino, Cottage Grove and to to the other three as well. But I I would like to get out to see all of them, and that's one of my goals by the time I'm I'm done here is to have been to all 28. And be able to see the operation and and get an idea of what's going on. There are lots of pictures and a lot of good information from the maintenance staff here that kind of give me a mental picture of what's going on. But again, nothing replaces being able to be there on the ground and seeing it firsthand and having a firsthand knowledge.
Okay, well, super. I'd like to hear that. That's awesome. Okay, well, I appreciate the presentation and kind of getting through this. I think that for me, the next steps would be is kind of where do you think the board needs to review various policies? And, you know, let's get them on the agenda. Where would you like them to be? And the board will bend over backwards to make sure room on our space to make sure that you get what you need so that you can kick off the review processes that I know you need to kick off.
Okay, well, thank you. And, you know, I I took notes from from your comments on on priorities and appreciate those comments. It really is, we we do want to make sure we're here getting plenty of opportunity for public comment and involvement when we are looking at refreshing or updating our rules and and policies. So it is just time, but but we can definitely come in the next meeting with kind of a timeframe and and prioritization for how we're going to bring these these updates to you.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Kenji, any thoughts as you kind of roll in? That's fine. I appreciate that. Uh, Kenji, any thoughts as you kind of roll in? You're, this is a great time for you to kind of get your eyes on. You bring a fresh set of uh, of uh, you know, review. Uh, any, I'll leave the over final thoughts to you.
Sure, day four, uh, it's been great. The staff has been absolutely wonderful. I've been getting, uh, drinking from the fire hose, but I know it's gonna get worse. So, uh, been having a lot of fun, been, uh, been interfacing with a lot, a lot of stakeholders. Next week I'll be. Uh, gone, but the week, following week, I'll be doing a lot of meet and greets with, with the staff one-on-one. And uh, also starting to schedule some airport visits as well. And then uh, next comes the stakeholder meetings and then next comes the legislators, so going at it for work. Having a, having a good time at it as well. And then I just want to uh, uh, mention that. Uh, when I, when I talked with uh Stacy Postgate, our counsel, she mentioned that there's some updated leasing agreement language. I- is that correct, Tony? That's inbound? That was based actually on Eugene, I think?
Uh, okay, the, we've been working with DOJ on, we have been uh already working with them on the uh. Leasing through the, and through the fence template updates. So a lot of this uh is, we're, we're trying to get the ball rolling. Um, and we're trying to, to work on, you know, uh, as many of these simultaneously where we can. Uh, but we are trying to partner with DOJ on, on updating that, that boilerplate document.
And I, Stacy, attorney is uh wanting to pop in here. Holly, can, can you get her on board?
These should be able to uh be visible and to speak.
Hey, there's Stacy.
Just to pipe in and um, Kenji, I'm sorry, I think I threw a lot of stuff at you yesterday, so I probably confused. Um, it was probably pretty confusing. So to be clear, the Eugene lease that I'm talking about. Is one that since ODOT is your agency that you have to, you use a lot of their leases and run through all of their leases. Um, we have been working with ODOT to develop it, um, updated leases for all of their property. There is a great lease that the city of Eugene just entered into, from my perspective, Catherine, sorry, but from. That the city of Eugene entered into with ODOT and that can form the template to assist you and to assist ODOT. So that is actually not an aviation lease, that's an ODOT lease.
Alright, thanks for the correct uh clarification, Stacy. Really appreciate it. Alright, so we've got uh, and you know. There's not a state agency out there that doesn't continuously review their regulations. That's what we do and we continually to comb through. And the good part here, as y'all comb through, you can make the board smart. So uh, we look forward to you kind of telling us where you need us to interject. Uh, we're here to help. But overall, this is one of the most important things we do in the regulatory world to make sure that we get it right. So um, I appreciate giving it the opportunity to give the board some time to get us smart on this. But you really need to bring us forward and to make sure that we totally understand, you know, what's going on. And to make sure that we're, you know, as, as tight as we can be on this, because this is a direct interface with our public out there and um. We appreciate the ability to go through and make sure everything is as good as we can make it. Alright, so with that, uh, more work to come. We'll probably talk a little bit about this at the June board meeting. But any reattacks out there? Okay, great first work session. We appreciate it. And Kevin, by the way, it's good to have you on board. So it tickles me pink that we got somebody looking full-time at leases. So kudos.
I'm happy, very happy to be here.
Alright, guys, I don't have anything else. Anything from the staff?
To make here for the record. I uh, wanted to let you know that we got ahold of Tom and he is on his way to Phoenix.
Gotcha. Okay, so that's been clarified. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
And uh, would this be excused?
Uh, I, at this point, it will, yeah, we'll give him an excuse. Not a problem.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So with that, I'm gonna say adieu, guys. Have a great day.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate it.
It's closed.
Thank you.